Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance and to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. We have the agenda in front of you. Is there any changes or council have any changes or additions they want to put on? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Dave, second.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, June 17th, 2015, regular meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2015?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Now's when we have our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Third and last time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. With that, we will move on to our reports and presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. George Ilerdson from Northland Securities. We're the firm that's helped the city with public finance issues over the last number of years. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the bond issue relating to actually financing the Beltline project and the Center Street project. And so in your packets, there was a finance plan summary. And if everybody's got that, I'll refer to a couple pages in there. And then please, if you have any questions, let me know. As well, later on in your agenda, there's a resolution for you to consider. And as you probably realize, tonight, you're not issuing bonds, but rather calling for a sale of bonds. So it would be a month from now that you would be selling bonds. So again, the, maybe I'll just refer to page two of this document, the finance plan summary. If you open that, the two projects that were helping the city finance, and I've been working with your administrator for some time on getting the project numbers together. And as you know, you've been through a street reconstruction hearing. That's the one necessary to issue the Beltline project. So the first project under number one is, even though it doesn't say it, that's Center Street, you're doing that more through a traditional street financing approach where there's special assessments involved. In the second project, the Beltline project, that's the one where it's, it's just levy dollars paying for that. And so that is one that you needed to go through a different statutory authority called street reconstruction bonds, and that's where you held a hearing and allowed for public comment. So tonight, again, as I referenced earlier, under summary of recommendations or recommended items, proposals would be received upon passing that resolution calling for the sale. It calls for a bond sale on August 5th. So we would take financing bids in our office that morning, and I would be back that evening to present those. The, as noted a little bit earlier, security for the bonds, you've got a combination of tax dollars, special assessments as well. Will help service that debt. Under number six, prepayment option, this is the, what we sometimes refer to as the call date on the bonds, that's the date that you can prepay or refinance your bonds, beginning February 1st of 2022 and any date thereafter. So the bonds are, they go out to the year 2026. You know, in the current, this is a relatively short bond issue, so whether or not a refinance at that time is an opportunity, you know, of course, yet to be seen. But certainly you'd have the opportunity to prepay if you have prepaid assessments, for example. And once you reach that call date, you can prepay part of the bonds or all the bonds. So it's at the city's option. In terms of the credit enhancement, this is one that, and actually, there's a typo on that page, the city has a better bond rating than noted. If you would see the glare I'm getting from your administrator, she recognizes that. She knows that it's a double A minus, which is one notch better than that A plus rating that's noted here. So we'll work with city staff on that. This is like going out and getting your personal credit rating, this is the credit rating for the city. The better the bond rating, the lower you borrow, the lower the interest rates on your new bond issuer. So again, a double A minus, that's what the city's present bond rating is. I would certainly expect that the outcome of that rating would be that they would affirm that bond rating. On the, you know, two pages ahead is the sources and uses, this is page four of the handout. The bonds are sized at a million 510. That covers all project-related expenses relating to the city's portion of the Beltline and Center Street projects. And then it covers any cost of issuance, the bond rating, the bond attorney, and any finance-related costs of issuing the bonds. Just for a little perspective on that next page, page five, this is the preliminary structure for the bonds. We have it structured, as you can see, with level debt over that approximate 10-year financing term. And now again, these aren't interest rates that you would lock in today. If this were a month from now, you would be locking into a preliminary structure or a structure like this. We'll have those final interest rates for you on August, August 5th as noted. Any questions on, on the financing?
I just got one clarification on page three.
Page three, sure.
Under the debt service fund, it says the county.
Yes.
I hope they take care of that, but I doubt it. Is that us?
Well, we're not going to make Stearns County pay for this bond, I know that. So that was simply a typo, it should say city, my apologies. But good catch, Mayor. The, you know, just to stay on that page, and this is maybe, you can cut me off if you want, I could talk about the minutia of bonding here for a while, but just for a couple of, of points of clarification, here's a bank qualified, what does that mean, the top one? That, that just means that you're issuing bonds that are bank qualified. Each year, municipalities, cities, counties, EDAs, for example, have a $10 million bank qualification limit. It's better to be issuing bank qualified bonds because banks get a tax credit for buying tax-exempt bank qualified bond issues, so you can borrow at lower interest rates. There is, it's pretty rare for a city of sock center size to be budding up against that $10 million annual limit. In the past, of course, you had some hospital debt that was, that was in that $10 million range. So that would be the rare exception. Or in the case of some municipalities, of course, water treatment plants and wastewater treatment plants aren't inexpensive. So that would potentially be a scenario as well. I know that's, I know you were waiting to ask that question, Mayor, and so I thought I'd jump ahead on that. But any other questions from the council on, on the structure of the bonds or timing?
Questions?
Terrific. Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to action items. Approve resolution 2015-42, approving request for sale of bonds and approving municipal advisor's agreement.
This is simply what George was just talking about, this is the action that actually allows him to proceed with the sale of the bonds, that's action number one. And then action number two is actually the agreement that we will use their firm to follow through with the balance of the financing. So you can adopt them both as one action, or you can make two separate motions, whichever you prefer.
What's council's wishes?
I just want them together.
Okay. All right. Do anyone, anyone else have any comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion. To approve resolution 2015-42, approving request for sale of bonds and setting sale date, and approve the municipal advisor's agreement with Northland Securities.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Diane. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Revisit ordinance 759, approving annexation of property.
Okay, at the city council meeting on May 20th, I put in there, but I believe it was May 6th, the city council held a public hearing to consider the request for annexation of a one-acre parcel on the west limit of the city, and the city council failed to adopt the ordinance. What had happened that night was there was a motion and a second to approve it, and that action failed. So we didn't kill it, we just failed to pass it. So that kind of a little, a little incident there. But the applicant is requesting that the ordinance be again considered for adoption. He is seeking municipal water and sewer for a future new home construction, which requires the property be within city limits, otherwise he'd have to put in a well and a septic system. The property in question is the Platte of Relands Edition, it's legally described as Lot 1, Block 1. Relands Edition is located at 290 Minette Road. I had a couple bullet points referring to the last council meeting. At the public hearing, residents in the neighborhood were concerned that if approved, the city would use this annexation as a springboard to continue annexing other properties in the neighborhood. That was one, that was the issue that the neighborhood had, was that concern. There was concern that the annexation was not along a section line to maintain city boundary symmetry, that was brought up by the council. There was a comment that the property already had an accessory building on it without a primary residence, and that the existing building did not meet zoning requirements. It met all the setbacks, but it's a size larger than we would allow. And so there was, that building would come in as a lawfully existing non-conforming. The applicant does not suggest, he did not want the city or encourage the city to use that as a precedent, that was not his intent. The city has annexed property in the past, including the most recent annexations in 2014. They are larger parcels, but they are single parcels. If the city wishes to restrict annexations to section lines in the future, though, we should maybe adopt a policy for some kind of guidance on that, so we as staff know that. And maybe that's something for a future meeting that we should talk about. The detached accessory building on the property would be legally existing non-conforming, as the city doesn't require, does require that the primary use on a residential lot to be a dwelling unit, and that building is larger than permitted over the counter for new structures. It was verified that the building does meet all city setbacks with ample residual property to construct a conforming residential dwelling unit. So the applicant is here if you have any additional questions for him. But he is requesting that the city bring that up for consideration. You have three options. If you take no motion and the agenda moves to the next item, you can introduce the motion to approve, if it gets a second and a vote. You can introduce a motion to deny as well. And so we have the ordinance in front of you again, which is ordinance 759, annexing the land into the city. I did have, that we had talked about at the last meeting and is included in there, the payment to the county, I believe we discussed, was $88 a year for five years. And that was consistent with what they would have received if it stayed in the township. And that's the same formula that we used when we annexed the two parcels south of the freeway. So, and that's not filled in on this one, but that was what we had discussed at the meeting. Does anybody have any questions for me or for Tim?
Questions?
I haven't answered, so.
I think we've covered most of it. I don't really have any questions. So, what's the council's wishes? We got three options here. Do nothing and let the agenda move on, or someone introduce a motion to approve, or introduce a motion to deny.
I think, speaking for myself personally, I think I was originally the one to motion to approve the annexation when it came to the table the first time. And I would again, make a motion to approve as well.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it again.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, Heidi, from Heidi, and a second from Dave. Is there any other questions or concerns?
Comments?
Comments?
Yeah, I, I would point out that, you know, the detached building, I think, was a big concern, that it's a non-conforming building. But I'd say, go ahead and, you know, stand out there right now and look west off of Minette Road, the building is there. You know, I don't see as it makes any difference, whether it's in the city or not, it's there. So it seems like a kind of a questionable thing to base it on. And it's not like we don't have non-conforming buildings all over this city anyway.
There's a few.
There's, yeah, there is a couple here and there. So it seems like the question is, you know, the person wants to join the city, he wants to get water and sewer from the municipal. That building's already there, and it's not going anyplace, whether we join, whether he joins the city or not, it's going to be there. Do we want the taxes? Do we want the customers? Would we rather have him with a well and a septic system right on the edge of the city?
I think, Tim, that was originally your concern, is the cost difference, correct? Which is valid for, you know, anybody who's building a house.
But I, I mean, I know there are places in this state where there are rules against that. If you're that close to a municipal system, you can't get a permit to build it because it's right there. And they'd rather not see septic systems, and they'd rather not see private wells.
Sure. Anyone else?
Well, I just had one question, you know, are, are we interested in adopting a policy for the future? For annexation along?
Along the section lines? Oh, I don't, we don't have section lines as borders anywhere right now hardly, so it seems kind of pointless to start now.
Okay.
It's, you know, old roadways, old road beds, old river beds, I mean, there's just...
Then that was my major concern, was the not going by section lines, which basically we have, irregardless of old city, new city, most of the annexations always have been. But...
Most of the annexations have been section lines?
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
For larger parcels.
For larger parcels? Well, I know that the part that we annexed northwest for the water plant is, it's not on section lines, some of it is.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Questions?
I know that the, the neighbors were concerned about future annexation, as you had put in here, but like, I think Dave, you brought it up the last time, that it, it might, if the city isn't doing it, it could be, it could be state-related because of their, you know, the structures they currently have in the ground.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not instigating this annexation, so would it affect anything else?
No.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll call the question, all those in favor. To approve the ordinance 759, annexing land into the city, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Consider purchase of squad vehicle for K-9 unit.
Brian is here to talk to you about the squad replacement, but as you know, our K-9 squad was totaled in an accident on June 6th, 2015. The League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust has offered a settlement to the city for the value of the car, for the equipment damaged, and the cost of refitting the existing equipment into a new squad. The squad that was damaged was a 2011 Crown Victoria, this style squad is no longer available. This was an owned squad versus a leased squad. Chief Fredericks has sought out a suitable vehicle through the state bid, he's located a vehicle that would be available immediately if the city council authorizes him to do so. It's part of a fleet being shipped to another city that has stated it would wait for one of its new squads to allow sock center immediate delivery of the one it has on order. Otherwise, we would have to wait until September. The finance committee did meet prior to this meeting, and they're recommending that the city council move forward with this purchase. But I'll let Brian go ahead and address some of the comments that they had, and also answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like I presented to the finance committee, we, of course, our squad was totaled on the interstate, and we're trying to get into another K-9 squad as soon as possible. I gave you some of the numbers, I don't know.
These are the same numbers that you had emailed?
Yeah, it's just a little reminder of some of the numbers that were presented there. Like I say, I think that, looking at it, I think buying out a new squad would be beneficial as a verse to buying out a leased car, or leasing another one. I think in doing that, we could run this car four to five years maybe. And I just think, at this time, that'd be the way to go. With the equipment for the new squad through the lease company, or through the company, Nelson Auto, was willing to sell us that car for state bid price at 26.9, I think it was. And we're looking at about $9,000 to replace all the equipment, that's new kennel, or new K-9 kennel for the squad. As you know, that old kennel cannot be used because they don't make the Crown Victoria squad anymore, so we're kind of out with that squad. And then, and that kennel. So that presents a problem. So with that amount of money, those two figures, insurance wants to give us around 14 to offset our cost. So that puts us at about $22,000 to buy out a new squad car, fully equipped with all new equipment in, or a lot of new equipment in. I think that would go, you know, like I say, four to five years, and I think that'd be the, the route to go. Any questions that you guys have?
By other, by the equipment, you're talking about not only the equipment for the K-9, but the lights and the rigging?
Yeah, a lot of our equipment that's in our K-9 wouldn't be able to switch out to that, but there would be a few new items, I'd have to get center counsel to fit our equipment, computer rack for the computer, you know, because it's going into completely new vehicle. The K-9 kennel would be one-third to two-thirds kennel, in which allows for a prisoner to be put back there, and less space for the dog and room for a prisoner. So that would enable us to be able to use that car when, when the K-9 officer's not using it, if we needed it for backup. So that'd be beneficial in using it for that way too, so we'd have another car for backup.
I didn't hear about this, are they both okay?
Yep, the officer was out of the car when this happened. He was standing beside the, the suspect's car, and yeah. Female had moved over, but then as she got closer, moved back into the lane to where the officer was off on her shoulder, and clipped our squad car. So squad car's worth, as insurance said, about $6,000, and the damage was about $11,000, so they totaled it out. So Sonny was a little rattled, I guess, and shaken up, but, and by the end of the day, he was fine, so. Yeah, no one was injured, that's the fortunate part about it.
Any other questions or comments? Finance committee met, and that committee consists of Dave and myself, with Brian on this. We had looked at the options between leasing and direct buy. Leasing, you're looking at around $900, $900 to $1,000 a month compared, so after two years, you basically are going to have almost the same amount stuck in if you buy it out. Also, with buying it, we can actually get the car probably as soon as tomorrow.
Good.
Where if we lease it, we're going to have to wait till September, which means our K-9 unit is down. And we work with two squads instead of three, which we basically need. So with that, is there any other questions or comments or concerns?
And one other thing, I guess, since it's a, the unit would be pretty much dedicated to K-9, which means it's not going to get the kind of use that the other units get.
Right.
And it'd be reasonable to think that it would last, you know, maybe four, maybe even five years if we, if it stretched out, but...
Yeah. Being, it'd be a new squad car used by one officer, basically by one officer, so can't project, you know, at this time, what, how long we'd be able to use it, but in looking at it, and I think we'd get four years out of it for sure, so.
Was this, excuse me, was the, this vehicle that got totaled, was that on the, pretty much the next vehicle that would have been replaced anyhow?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to try to get another, oh, yeah, I was hoping to get a year out of it as a K-9 unit, you know, it had a, it had $110,000 on it already, so, but I was hoping to stretch it out, but that didn't make it, so.
Well, as I recall, we were given the dog equipment for it.
Yeah, we were donating, another department donated the kennel for that, being, and I think that's because, you know, the Crown Vics are going out, and a lot of departments are moving to a different K-9 squad, so it just worked out that we were using that squad yet, so that was beneficial, so.
One other thing that I want to point out, just so the public's aware, most of the money that we're talking about purchasing this car with is from police forfeiture money.
Correct.
So it shouldn't really be an effect on the budget that much, on what the police department and the K-9 has been doing with the forfeiture money.
Yep. And after the purchase, it would be the, you know, the cost of maintenance, oil changes and tires, you know, so.
Right.
You don't want to put the drug dog out of commission already. We've got to keep him working.
So any other comments or questions for Ron or anything? Okay. Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion to approve purchase of the 2016 police interceptor.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, a motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against.
Thank you. Before you go, Brian, now that it's passed, we're getting a squad car as early as tomorrow because a department, another department has offered it to us, would you explain that?
Yes, I think, in speaking to Nelson Auto out of Fergus, who was sending, shipping it out, it sounded like this squad was going to Minneapolis or St. Paul, and they had offered to, because they know we're down, our K-9 unit's down, to let us take their car. So that's how we're able to get one so quickly, which was very nice of another department to do that.
Thanks to them, then.
Yep, it's much appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to unfinished business. Resolution 2015-40, vacating road right-ofway.
As you know, in the last city council meeting on June 20th, the council tabled action on the request for the vacation of part of the road right-ofway of 10th Street, located west of Beltline Road. This is back before the council to continue the discussion with the option to take action on the request. The proposal would be to vacate the last 200 feet of the public right-ofway of 10th Street South, where it abuts the city limit. This is the legal recorded access for a parcel of record to the south and west, and for the freeway billboard access, and it abuts property in the township that is currently farmland. Although this is the legal right-ofway as recorded, the road as traveled cuts across the corner of private property. If that as-traveled roadway was ever eliminated in the future, the physical roadway could be legally constructed in this existing right-ofway. Action by the council would actually create a landlocked parcel, although they can drive to it across private property, it doesn't, it no longer would have public right-ofway. The right-ofway's been in existence for many years, but was relocated slightly north from its previous location in 2013 due to a non-conforming structure that did not meet setbacks. The owner of which, on which the property or the right-ofway exists has petitioned that The owner of which, on which the property or the right-of-way exists has petitioned that it be vacated. He proposes to build a home on the property with the possibility of a lot split for a second future home. We have a few considerations. If the private as-landlocked drive is eliminated in the future, how will the landlocked parcel of record and highway billboard easement be accessed? We did talk about perhaps that other property owner granting them an easement. That was the conversation we had at the last meeting. If the abutting farmland develops in the future to residential or commercial, will there be ability to loop municipal utilities and roadways through the property? We will have more than one access would be required due to the length of cul-de-sacs as limited by ordinance. And if the city concurs the right-of-way should be vacated, will the owner of the parcel with the as-traveled portion, as I just stated, would he be required to grant a formal easement? And if so, should it be a public easement for future road access or is it okay for it to be private easement to that property? So I did again include in your packet, I highlighted in blue the parcel that the owner owns. You can kind of see where that road travels on the aerial photo. And then also, kind of a, I pulled back on the, on the copy to show you how that future road would look. And then you can see where the as-traveled road goes. And then on page twenty-nine, it's actually the certificate of survey that's on there. And I highlighted in green the portion that is requested to be vacated. So I don't see that the applicant is here tonight to add any further work, but I know the council was, had a question for me about how wide of an easement would be required if we required an easement across that parcel for utilities and roadway. And it depends, you know, if it's electric, it can go on a narrower easement, maybe thirty feet if you're going overhead so you have it on each side. If we're building a road and we're putting in water and sewer and curb and gutter, of course, we want sixty-six foot easement. So the size of the easement would vary depending on what public use we were going to use for it. And I did not, I don't know, for a private easement, if they just want a private driveway, you know, that's between, I guess, that owner would have to be contacted to see if he'd be willing to grant that.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
Again, I don't see how we can vacate that easement without guaranteeing access back to that property. And we don't have another easement. I mean, if we had arrangements for an alternative easement, that's one thing. But we're just landlocking that, we're just landlocking the parcel back there.
And the owner of that parcel said, you know, he actually signed the petition back there, but he said that's only if he has, make sure he has access in the future. So I don't know if he was expecting us to find him access or if he was expecting them to grant access across the private property. But that was his concern as well. He just needed to be able to get to his property and to get to his billboards.
Yep. That's what I'd say. We'd have to have access guaranteed. We don't have that. If we just vacate it, we'd have to have an alternative easement.
Right.
So I think unless we have an alternative, there's no way we can vacate what we have.
One of the things, you know, vacating, I can see other options with this parcel if we did vacate it, but it's the landlocked part unless, and I would probably go along with vacating as long as he could get an agreement, show us the agreement that he's got a right to go across so he can get to his property. That I could live with.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
Because I think as far as utilities, I think we can, there's other options. You know, we can, they can come off of Pendergast. We can come out of the industrial park across the highway. You know, it's all going to cost money, but everything does. And also, if we would happen to do a road off of that, if we don't vacate it and make that a road right-of-way and we make another loop, then you're looking to increase traffic again there too. So I'm open to options. I don't know if anyone else has got anything.
I guess I would agree with Dave that, you know, like you said, Warren, everything's going to cost money except if we don't vacate this. That's, that's not going to cost us a thing.
Yeah, we have this easement.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, I don't see how we can vacate it if we don't have an alternative. And we're going to have to pay for any alternative.
I agree. I agree.
The other concern that I got is even if we did get a property owner's permission, you know, to cross that to get to his landlocked property, if they ever change property owners, is that going to, you know, that's going to end it right there.
Yep. And that is, any easement he gets, there's not an easement we can use. I mean, that's just a little dirt driveway.
And it's one of those things I've looked at, every possible option of opening them all, but that landlocked part is the part that comes up all the time. You know, and until we can figure out a way to make that a forever deal, it is a very hard decision to make. So is there any other comments or questions, clarification needed? If not, I'll be looking for a motion either way, I guess.
I will make a motion to deny the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion from Dave to deny resolution 2015 dash forty, vacating public right-of-way. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
A second by Keith. Any other comments or questions? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Big Sock Lake Aquatic Weed Control.
The operations committee, which is Diane Kelly and Keith Johnson, they attended a meeting of the Big Sock Lake Association on June twentieth where they discussed the 2016 plan for the spraying of curly leaf pond weed in Sock Lake. The Big Sock Lake Association contracted with RMB, who conducted a survey on the lake on June twenty-third. They expect a report back within thirty days and have scheduled a meeting for July twenty-fifth to review the results. Based on the findings of that survey, they will develop a budget for 2016 on ultimately what could be sprayed. And then, of course, that would be pared down by the DNR in 2016 of what can be, what they would allow for. With a meeting date of July twenty-fifth, it won't be possible to present the plan and budget to the city council prior to the July thirty-first date. That's the deadline for submitting the budget to the watershed. And so we're asking that either the operations committee be granted the authority to review and approve the budget request at the July twenty-fifth meeting of the Sock Lake Association or the city council allow for an August fifth date to consider the plan at our regular council meeting for ultimate presentation to the watershed. Because of the timing of when they can do the surveys on the lake in June and they get their survey results back and then we get it in front of a city council, we kind of have a time crunch right there because they're basing the budget based on the survey by this company. So I don't know in the future if we should make an August fifteenth date or something instead of July thirty-first. But for this specific one, we're asking, you know, can they have the authority to review it and approve it? Can, or can we just agree that we're going to be a week later? We're going to be a week out from that deadline date to submit it back to the watershed. So we're good with either option.
Keith, what's the council's wishes?
I'm not interested that we should abrogate our responsibilities and let the committee do it. I think we have to do it at the council level. I think August fifth is fine, although I question whether we're going to actually see much of a plan on August fifth. I wonder if we should extend the deadline a little longer. I mean, I'm looking at that thinking, really, they're going to get us a plan in that timeframe? I'm guessing we're not going to see much of a plan. We're going to see a lake survey and not much else.
That's, that's kind of an impression I got.
So maybe we.
I don't have any problem with extending the date to the end of August.
So maybe we extend it past our second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we can see a plan instead of just, here's the survey, we're going to spray everything we can.
I don't think Diane and I would feel comfortable.
No, definitely not. I agree.
Is extending the date going to cause an issue as far as with the watershed? As far as how they do things with their policy? Or is it?
Their issue is just to have a budget number to plug into the budget of what's expected to be paid the next year. And so they're working in budget in July and August, just like we are. They've got the same timeline. They have a certification date to the county as September thirtieth, but, or September fifteenth, I believe theirs is. But this is not tax levy for them to have to certify. So I'm sure they'll be okay with an August date.
And then I would hope that we would get a better report or a plan. And I don't know how many times the operations committee's going to have to meet with the lake association to get that plan done, to bring to us. But I know we definitely got to keep our hands together on this one. I've been all the way around the lake and a couple of times now by pontoon and have checked it out. Every part of the shoreline I've been, I looked at. And there are areas where the curly leaf pond are starting to come back, even on the lower end right now. So it's definitely something that we got to keep an interest in and work with, I think. Because I can see the changes coming back again. It's pushing its limits. So.
What, what they're proposing is to do a survey every single year to see how effective the spraying was last fall. And this way, they have a scientific point where they can make a decision. Is it effective? Do they need a spray every year? Do they need a spray once every ten years? It's the only way to really know is to do the survey once a year, go and rake up the weeds and look at them and see what we got. It's a process. That's the way they explained it to us.
And it's establishing the process that takes the time.
Yep.
So action requests authorize the committee to agree to plan the budget, which I don't think is a viable thing. Or extend the approval date to, what, the second meeting in August?
I'd extend it to the second.
That sounds good.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion for the second date in August.
Okay. We have a motion by Dave. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Heidi.
Is it an option, Vicki, to keep that as a moving forward yearly, the second meeting in August? To establish that?
Yeah, we have an operational plan that we've agreed to with the watershed and the lake association. So I'll go to them. And if we can get it changed for, on an annual basis, that'd probably work out best for all of us. So, but we can't change it for them. This is just us saying we, we're changing our end to give them time.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Well, one, one comment. I hope they keep moving that they don't just sit back for a month.
And it might depend also on how quick that survey comes back. You know, if they've got other projects and they don't think this one's viable, they might not be too speedy either. So this'll give them more time. Okay, with that, we'll call the question. We have a motion and a second to extend the approval date to the second meeting in August. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Capital project update, Beltline Road and Center Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A little update on the project. I wish I could tell you things were going fast and furious, but not, not just yet, after the holiday. There has been some removals. You've likely seen, there's been some removals on the, on the reconstruct portion of Beltline. At first, kind of several thousand-plus feet of the west of Main Street that has been removed and whatnot. So they're starting to do traffic controls up, that kind of thing. But most of the work will kind of start next week. The pipe crews come in on Monday, so they'll start laying pipe from Main Street to the west. The following week, the subcontractor who's doing the jacking underneath Main will be in and starting that work. So things will really kind of get going really next week after, after the holiday weekend. So a lot going on there. There is a couple of things that we wanted to bring to your attention. And this is related to the Getty portion of the project. Mitch Fisness owns property on both sides of Getty Street. At the old Wonder Bread on the west side, he has asked for wider, there's two entrances into that property, the south side and north side. And he would like wider entrances into them, which are beyond our standard twenty-four foot. We could accommodate those. However, we've put a price together for that and it's, our estimate is nineteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars to widen both of those accesses. On the east side of the road, Mr. Fisness has asked for a surmountable curb on that side, basically all the way along those, well, pretty much his entire, the rental property there as well as his, his business for the automotive shop there as well. That is an additional cost. In order to do that, it's currently a B-six curb through there, which is standard plus driveways as they're currently in place there now. In order to move it to surmountable curb, that would be about forty-one-hundred dollars to do that. With that, because in the rental area, it's all gravel, typically we would ask for a buffer, essentially a paved buffer, a ten-foot buffer to be behind that curb. It tries to keep some of that gravel and things in the parking lot versus being tracked out onto the road. That is something that the council could consider, whether they feel that that is necessary or not. It's not there now. So you can kind of gauge what you've seen there now. There is some tracking of gravel that occurs out there. But to put that buffer in would be about twenty-four-six for a total on the east side of twenty-eight-thousand and seven-hundred dollars. Now, the question is, two questions. One is, does the council wish to entertain either or all of those types of improvements? And two is, who would then pay for those improvements? Would the city pick up none or, or to all someplace or someplace in between? Or would this be entitled, would this be the landowner's responsibility if the council wished to move forward with those types of improvements? The landowner has not said one way or another whether he's willing to pay for those. But perhaps there's some indication the west side, those entrances, he might be willing to do that. East side, it wasn't quite as interested in paying for those improvements over there. But that's why I'm looking for some direction as to whether the council feels, A, we should do these and B, who should pay for those so we can go back to the landowner with whatever your wishes would be on it.
How many people would it benefit if we did do it on the east side?
On the east side, he's the only property owner. So, I mean, there are, it's a rental property on the south. So obviously, all of those rental units, people coming in and out. I believe he told me he thought approximately an average maybe of ten vehicles coming in and out on a day on an average basis is about what comes in and out of there. He does plow that lot. You may notice that he actually takes all that snow and pushes it to the south end of his property. My suspicion would be that he might try to go across the road and into the pond area with it, with, with the new improvements. But, and certainly, surmountable curb would, would benefit that operation a little bit. But, but there is a cost to it. So.
One of the things that I was thinking, you know, west side is doable, you know, widening it out basically, but, you know, with his M-Pay and the cost. The east side with the rental units that we've got there and the way they're lined up, I think we could control the traffic a little easier if they have to go to an actual driveway entrance. They can just drive off the curb anywhere they wish and get out into the street where I think we're creating a hazard at any end. And there's enough traffic on Getty without having, at least this way, if they got a, if they're going to drive off the curb, they're going to slow down. Or if they're going to go to the driveway entrance, at least the people that are driving on Getty got a chance. So to me, it's not even an option.
I believe they do kind of drive off the curb now. However, I think good point that they would have to do that a little bit slower. If it was a surmountable, they could pretty much just go.
Right. And to me, it's, it's a safety issue along with we can control the traffic just a little easier. And as far as entrances getting in there, that can all be done when reported curb.
Yeah, there are entrances planned in, you know, in the current plan based upon what's there now. So that wouldn't be a change at all on the, on the east side.
Because you, you know, if you picture yourself going down Getty Street and someone comes out between two rows of, of them rental units heading for the street and they don't slow down because they don't have to because there's no six-inch drop. You know, I can see a potential hazard there. So that's my opinion that I don't think would be something I'd consider. But I'm only one person out of five. So.
Yeah. No, I, I agree with you. I think the mountable curb is just asking for trouble. Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, I think the mountable curb is just asking for trouble, and, you know, if they're gonna drive over the curb anyway, well, that's, you know, a clear issue of liability if they're going over the curb. If we provided a driveway effectively, different situation.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, beyond that, I think it benefits one property owner, so I don't, I don't see why we'd wrap that into the project and spread the costs out to anybody else.
And on the west side, just to make sure, were we talking, the landowner must pay for that as well?
For that, driveways.
Is that what I think I'm, I'm seeing some nodding of heads.
With the west side, I think general consent that he'd pay the costs for doing that, but to, I don't have a problem with it.
No.
The east side is not an option as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
That should be all we need, we'll go back to the landowner and explain what options he has and, and go from there. Otherwise, I gave you an update, next, next meeting, we'll, there'll be a lot more that's, that's going on at that time. We do have a couple easements that we're still working on, that one at the co-op on Beltline, and the one on, with Fleet on Center Street, so we haven't made any progress on those, so we need to really start ratcheting up the, the pressure on that, so, 'cause we need those pretty soon, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Moving on, new business, budget timeline. That time of year.
It is that time of the year again. So the staff review of the 2016 proposed budget has begun, the department heads will be given budget worksheets for compilation of their budget numbers during these first two weeks of July, and then they'll give them back to me, and we will compile those and take them to the finance committee sometime, you know, toward, sometime the end of July 1st of August, so the finance committee will review them, and then we will go to a budget workshop meeting somewhere towards end of August or middle of August, and then we will have formal adoption of it in September, so it kind of gives you an idea for those of you that haven't been through the process before. So it starts with staff, department heads, finance committee, council, that's kind of how the way it goes, and then we have to certify our levy to the county in September, and then we have till December to do the final levy, at which time we can go down but not up, so that's kind of the process that we go through. Information only, nothing we need to do tonight.
Okay, any questions about the process? Not, we'll go on to 9B, accounting software.
The city, we will be converting to new accounting software on January 1st, 2016, this is a more Windows-based, we're on a Windows-based system that's kind of a, uses a lot of DOS programming, so we're kind of moving it forward a little bit. It will modernize the system, and it will save us about $1,000 per year in support costs, so it's kind of a no-brainer there. One portion of this that will be upcoming, which will initiate actually sooner, was actually, will be electronic time cards for all the staff to, you log in and enter all your time in, and it goes through the system to the department heads, and then to me, and then to accounting electronically. So that'll be a new thing for the staff to have to do, but I think it'll be more accurate, and it'll be a big time saver in the long run, so just some of the updates that we're seeing on that side of things.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, and then move on to the consent agenda, it's a very short one, we just have the schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $347,007.41, and paid claims of $1,101.27, for a total of Is there any questions on the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, I'll second that. Second by Keith. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. We have no informational items, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Dave, do I have a second?
A second?
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.